All right, it's one thirty, we're gonna call the meeting to order with all rise. Commissioner Cooper's on vacation, the judge is out ill today, we do have a court president, so we'll be proceeding with court. Commissioner Roberts?
Your grace is hallelujah, Father, thank you for all the many blessings you've given us. Watch over and guide us as we go about the business of this court in Jesus Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so item number three, considering possibly approved request by Matthew Minnick County Attorney to reduce the, is that PTD, part-time?
Pre-trial diversion.
Pre-trial diversion coordinators annual salary from twenty-seven thousand six ninety to twenty-six thousand one thirty and pay a document for two thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars annually from the pre-trial diversion fund zero-two-zero. If approved amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget as follows, and this is actually a correction to the action taken by Commissioners Court on July the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two due to the agenda item being incomplete. I think we've already taken action, this is just a housekeeping item?
Uh, yes, sir, the last, if you look at the amendment at the bottom to the budget on the portion that says two, the last three.
Can we have a motion from the court?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roberts, a second by Commissioner Young, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any who oppose? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number four, considering possibly approved final plat of Madison Part Two, a subdivision out of and part of Hooks and Keith Survey, abstract number seven eighty-two, Harden County, Texas, located in Precinct Three, as requested by Alex Parker, floodplain administrator. If approved, consider accepting a bond from RTC Homes in the amount of thirteen thousand ninety-five dollars for this subdivision. Alex?
Yes, sir, it's been approved by the county engineers.
Thank you.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Young, a second by Commissioner Roberts, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number five, a presentation of the two thousand twenty-three health insurance benefit renewal options by Orlando Espinoza, the Texas Association of County Employee Benefit Specialists. They consider taking action to adopt the two thousand twenty-three health insurance benefit renewal option based upon input by the Health Insurance Committee and set the renewal rate associated with the option selected. Is Mr. Espinoza here?
All right. Well, we'll kinda set the stage and then we'll probably refer back to Orlando to help us if we get bogged down on a couple of things. So, um, the newest should have these two pieces of paper. I'm gonna start with the one that does not have the green shading on it, the one that's labeled alternative or off in the plan proposal. So, this is, uh, as we are right now, under our current plan, um, and you'll see the, uh, you'll see the cost there, the highlighted yellow is if we stay with a single plan, no options, no other one, two, or three, a one-size-fits-all. Exactly what we have now, uh, with the percentage increase, and that is a six percent, five, five percent increase over last year's premiums. So if we do absolutely nothing and we leave it exactly where we are, we just renewed, uh, we're gonna go from nine fifty-three oh four per cover employee to a thousand and sixty-eight. Um, everything else is exactly the same if you work down the line. If we chose one of the other options, which, as you can see, has to do with raising deductibles, uh, and increasing co-pays as you go across the board, the less that you pay for the premium coverage, you've gotta give up something and what you're giving up is an increase in your deductible or an increase in your copay or, or prescription benefits. Transition over to the page that's highlighted green. If the county opts to go with a plan that provides for options, the renewal rate, again, you've got the current plan that's highlighted in green, you've got a renewal rate, keeping everything that we've got, which is gonna make that cost a thousand and twenty dollars, that is a seven percent increase. The difference in the five percent, if we do nothing and just renew to a seven percent, is there's a two percent cost overhead to manage multiple plans. So that's why there is a difference on this renewal rate compared to the renewal rate on the first page. This plan also takes into account figuring in some options. So if we wanna go to the employees and say, hey, you have an option, it's been a one-size-fits-all for the last several years, now you're gonna have options during open enrollment, you can choose the plan that may be better tailored to you and your condition, you and the specifics of the people you wanna cover, meaning you're willing to increase, uh, the chance of paying more out-of-pocket, the more of larger deductible that has to be met, so forth, then hey, you have options and you can pick the one that's best tailored to you. So we, the, the insurance committee has looked at, at having nothing versus options, and then if we looked at the option side, which options did we want to, to make a recommendation of, hey, this is the options that we want to bring forward. We gave, uh, we heard a lot of feedback from, from Orlando, our TAC rep, uh, and we based that on some information from other counties, some legwork that we did talking with employees at other counties and looking at plans. Harden County is one of few counties left in the state who still offer a plan with a five-hundred-dollar deductible. I'll use the word Cadillac, I don't know if I'm characterizing that right, but it's basically the best of the best, and there, there is a very, 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 they stressed very, few counties left in Texas that still offer that. That's one of the reasons why cost is so high, is that is a really good plan, it's a really good coverage, and it's a very low deductible, low office visits, a low prescription, uh, copay deductibles and, and, and amounts. And quite frankly, almost every county, all the ones around us have moved away from that, just because it is so expensive. And the thought process was, yes, we know we're gonna be passing on a higher deductible to the employee, but if the employee is able to pay a five-hundred-dollar deductible, the difference in that five-hundred-dollar deductible and a thousand-dollar deductible, but the cost savings that, that everybody would see based on the percentage increases of renewal, we felt like that that was a little better fit. So to, cut to the chase, if you look under option one, the column at the top, again, on the page, it has the green shaded block. We're looking at, at an option one. The committee's recommendation is that the county offer three options, and they're labeled option one, two, and three. The first one, I hate to use the word best, but the plan with the lowest deductible is a thousand, three thousand. The second option would be a two thousand, six thousand, and the third option would be a four thousand, eight thousand. If you, if you remember where we are on how much we were paying and what, some numbers that I think the court had, had spoken to the auditor and to Candace about, uh, about trying to figure in and crunch some numbers. If the, if the county considers a thousand dollars, if it gets budgeted a thousand dollars per participant, per employee, then what that does is that passes the cost on to reduce that employee spouse, employee child, or employee family. And as a comparison, if you look at that last option three, for an employee family is twenty-twenty-one. A thousand of that covered by the county, 'cause that's what it would cost to, to cover that employee if he chose the, uh, the option won't be nine sixty-eight, but if we budgeted a thousand, you're left with a thousand and twenty-one dollars. And again, we're talking kinda round generic numbers here for just a second, I'm not gonna get real far in the weeds. So you're looking at now about a thousand and twenty dollars for an employee to cover themselves, their spouse, and their children. So that's, uh, about a thousand dollars a month compared to if we do nothing and just renew our plan, that's going to be, uh, yes, sixteen hundred, give or take. So we're seeing a cost savings of the six hundred dollars at the expense, in full disclosure, at the expense of a higher deductible. So we've gotta do something, y'all, to get plans that are out there. It's my understanding we have one employee who is taking advantage of employee and family, which is a spouse and kids. We have one out of the entire county workforce that's taking advantage of that. We have a small number that have chosen either children or spouse, do you remember that number, thirty-eight, forty?
Twenty...
It's in the twenties.
Twenty, I think, is in the twenties.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, it's twenty.
And can I also state real quick too, that the five-hundred-dollar deductible, less than, what was it, ten percent of county employees ever even made the five-hundred-dollar deductible?
Right, and that was a big deciding factor. When, when Melinda was researching that, knowing that about ten percent is all of the covered employees that met the deductible last year, and I think maybe even the year before, is that pretty close to being right?
It's, it's about, between the ten and twenty percent, give or take.
That, that was a deciding factor for us, quite honestly, looking at, at making the recommendation to raise that, that, uh, best plan from a five-hundred-dollar deductible to a thousand-dollar deductible, because this past year we were on track for ten to eleven percent having met the deductible. So if they haven't met the five hundred, you know, that, that's kinda the, an incentive for us to see about raising that up to a thousand. Again, it's more, our, our, our directive was to look at what we had, to see if there were other options, if there's ways that we could offer plans that would reduce the cost to the employee and hopefully get them on board. We have eighty-three employees, Candace? Eighty-nine? We have eighty-nine that do not opt-in for insurance, uh, and I don't think a lot of people knew that.
I don't think that number is correct, because Candace and I went over that this morning.
Yeah.
So we really, I need to get Orlando and we need a double check.
That's the number of people that we have on the invoice that have shown his way. Could be more, 'cause there could be other people that aren't.
I bet that includes our retirees, would it include our retirees?
Um, it could.
So we know there is a large number, a lot larger than what we thought, that have waived coverage altogether. It's no secret, we need participants in the program, we need healthy participants in the program. So for things, and, and I'm gonna let Orlando go into a little bit more of the, what we pushed him hard on is how can we in years come, coming up, in years of the future, how can we reduce the county's cost of providing insurance? And of course, you're gonna hear the same broken record, and that's take advantage of, of alternative healthcare, take advantage of, of, uh, early intervention, wellness, wellness programs is a big, 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 big push, and helping our employees make better choices when they seek medical care. Instead of going to the ER, go to a medical clinic or a local physician, or a nurse practitioner, or somebody who would have a lower billing rate for your run-of-the-mill ABCs and things that you would go. Um, encourage those to try to develop a relationship and get, uh, a family physician. A lot, a lot of people do not have a relationship, so when there is an illness, when there's a sickness, they're going to the local Baptist or sane emergency room, and that billing rate to Blue Cross is exponentially high compared to, uh, something that would be, uh, a standalone medical clinic versus even a, a local family doctor. So we discovered real quick as a committee, we have got to do a better job educating our employees as to what's available and things they can do that will help overall to reduce the county's expense in providing the insurance. Um, and to educate them when it comes open enrollment time, when they come in and go to pick plans, uh, to either opt-in or opt-out, and if they opt-in, if they have a choice which plan to pick, we're going to have to, as department heads and elected officials, we've gotta do a better job leading up to that to educate them so that they're not going in and making a decision in ten minutes that's affecting the bottom line on what we're paying. Uh, and quite frankly, we've gotta get, we, we need to, we need healthy employees on that plan to help balance it out. Um, it's a pool, y'all know the risk pool and how that works, and those that have low claims kinda show the burden for counties that have high claims and vice versa. If we have a high claim here, we don't have to, to bite the whole bullet in our premiums. Some counties that have lower claims will help offset that, that's the whole concept of, of a risk pool. Again, to circle back, uh, the committees, uh, the committee's advice and the committee's proposal and recommendation is that you approve going back with TAC and renewing for another year, but renewing with options one, two, and three on the table, and that you earmark, uh, and allow or budget for that thousand dollar. There is some discussion, Melinda's gonna talk to you a little bit about the twenty dollars, even though right now we're paying twenty dollars per employee, the employee pays twenty dollars towards coverage, there was some discussion we had on the committee about whether we wanted to continue that or not. Um, she's got some good information to share with you on there, uh, but the bottom line is we're looking at options one, two, and three to at least give the employees, those that may consider opting back in and getting dependent coverage, it gets them something that is more affordable. Still not great, folks, but it is better than what they have, uh, an access to now. Uh, you're talking a six hundred dollar savings if we do nothing. If we do nothing, uh, but just renew what we've got and you wanna add a spouse and kids versus having options one, two, and three and adding that, uh, yes, they can choose a higher deductible, but if they choose that highest deductible plan, that's, that's around six hundred dollars a month savings to that employee, and we think we will have more people on board, but we don't know that. And one of the things we were, have been encouraged to do by TAC, uh, Melinda's already started working on it late last night and again this morning, is to survey the workforce as we have them right now, those that are currently on the payroll, survey every single employee and find out, present them with some possible numbers and options, and say, if this were in effect now and it was open enrollment time, where do you think you would land? Which option do you think? That helps us then go back to TAC and present some numbers, because quite frankly, we, we worked on Orlando hard yesterday trying to get off that seven percent and get him down to six, uh, to shave a percentage point off to try to save the county some, some costs. And, and although they can't commit to that on the front end, and I understand that, they are open-minded to say, if you can help us forecast a little bit better on how many you're gonna have in the plan and who those would be, and how many of them would have employee versus dependent coverage, then, then yes, we, we would be open to some, some, some discussion. He was very quick to say, I'm not promising that, it's not in writing, and that's, that's just us in a, in a discussion. But yes, I think that that would reflect favorable and that there may be some, some wiggle room there to get a little bit off of that, that, uh, seven percent renewal, so.
Uh, Sheriff, I'm a little confused.
Okay.
So if we look at committing the thousand dollars,
Mm-hmm.
and a employee picks option one and it's nine sixty-eight, so that's a savings of thirty-two dollars.
That is correct.
And then that would roll over to?
It's unused or go back to general fund at the end of the year?
Or he could roll it over to offset thirty-two dollars?
No, the employee's not gonna be able to make money off of his choice.
Now, what I'm talking about, what we're talking about, say if it's an employee plus family, that thirty-two dollars or whatever it is would not go toward that twenty-five-eleven?
What, what we're looking at is paying a thousand dollars per employee. So if, say, you're employee only and you, you choose just yourself, you pay the nine sixty-eight fifty-seven, or the county pays the nine sixty-eight fifty-seven, you pay nothing. But say I choose to do employee children, then I'm allotted that thousand dollars towards me to, you know, choose, so I'll only owe, um, on the thousand-dollar plan, uh, four hundred and fifty dollars and fourteen cents. So that extra, I guess, thousand dollars that's allotted to you as an employee will go back into the general fund or even, I mean, I had even thought about, um, keeping it in, I don't know if we have a line item or how it would work for the insurance, and sort of have it as a savings to maybe pay more towards dependent coverage next year.
A better way to say it would be that the county would be paying up to a thousand dollars per choice that you make as an employee. So if it was employee only, the county would be on the hook for the nine sixty-eight fifty-seven. But if they chose option one and added children, as she said, it's fourteen fifty. So the county's on the hook for a thousand. Four hundred and fifty dollars would go to the employee per month as their cost. Yeah, so up to a thousand dollars. So the way you're gonna do that is you're gonna, you're gonna budget a thousand. Yes, there's gonna be some that pick employee only, they're single, they have no dependents, uh, and, and, and they're, and they're willing to keep paying the twenty dollars that it, that it would, would be if we went in one of the other plans, and that plan, they're not gonna have to pay that. That plan's gonna be covered.
It's sort of the best of both worlds, what we were trying to accomplish, because now the employees will pay nothing for their health insurance. We're not going up at a higher, much higher rate than what we have this year. We've already basically have it budgeted for a thousand dollars, and we're also paying towards dependent coverage. So it's sort of, you know, it all goes in together. We are getting a five-hundred-dollar higher deductible, people choose to stay on the best plan, but like we said, I mean, we had less than ten or twenty percent, so that's less than twenty people in the whole county that have even met a five-hundred-dollar deductible.
And follow that option one heading, again, it's on the page that has the green shaded block, come over to that middle column, option one, and follow it down, and you'll see where the deductible is a thousand, three thousand. Follow that line on down. Office visits for, for co-pays, by doing that, we're only going up five dollars. So the difference is twenty-five versus thirty dollars of what it would cost somebody for, for a, uh, primary care or a specialist. We went up five dollars. On the emergency room visits, from a hundred to a hundred and fifty. And if you look down at the prescription plan, that stayed the same. So we felt very comfortable, yes, we know that we're giving up that five-hundred-dollar deductible, but we felt comfortable that what we were left with was doable. A five-dollar increase for an office visit, fifty-dollar increase for an emergency room, but our prescription benefits stay exactly the same. Quite frankly, I think that's, that's, that's doable. And I would tell you, I, I'm not in favor of a one-size-fits-all, uh, but if we didn't have those options, that would have been the plan, that would have been the one-size-fits-all to go with, 'cause it would have kept it as close to what we have now, with the exception of that deductible going up from five hundred to a thousand. Feel free to, to talk about the other, maybe the survey, or what we wanna hope to accomplish out of that, and then?
I think you pretty much covered the survey, and I do wanna say on the, uh, emergency room going up to one fifty, that is also something we talked about, because it helps encourage people not to go to the emergency room, which keeps our claims cost lower. And so in this year, we will be, um, we have a meeting Monday, I believe, or I do, and, um, some, from the Health Department, to start the Healthy County Incentive, we will be bringing that to court to get people out there to, um, know, to go get their wellness exams, their, uh, the ladies, their yearly exams, mammograms, uh, colonoscopies, all of that. We are bringing that to court to have that incentive there for the employees. I don't know yet what the incentive will be, it's something we're still working on, but this, it all kind of goes hand in hand.
But they have Aflac, I think, Aflac reimburses it, forgives you so much benefit.
Well, this is something we wanna do as, as the county, as part of the county, to give our employees incentive to go and get these checkups and stay healthy, to help keep our claims cost down, because it's, this is not going to happen by next year, it's going to take several years. But that's one of the big things, you have to give people incentive.
And on the auditing end, we can do that, we can apply the thousand dollars toward?
So what they're saying is though, the county would spend up to a thousand dollars based on the plan that they select. So if a plan was less than a thousand dollars, then, and if we budgeted a thousand, it would just roll back into the budget. So there would be a budget to actual savings there, um.
So we're good on the auditing end?
Yeah, I mean, based on the percentage that I increase, currently, we would have to increase the budget another, just a little, just a spot.
I think it was like ten dollars per employee.
Ten dollars a month per person, so.
Sheriff, this is Wayne, can you hear me?
Yes, hello Judge.
The, uh, plan that's pulled up on the screen there that says dual plan alternate proposal, can you see that?
Uh, yes.
And that is the plan that the insurance committee has recommended?
Under options one, two, and three, that is correct.
And you're asking for the court to budget, I guess it would be one thousand dollars and sixty-nine cents per employee, and depending on which, which plan they choose, that money would go toward that plan?
No, because we wanna do away with the five-hundred-dollar deductible plan.
Uh, yes, so you're partially correct Judge, on, uh, options one, two, and three, where you've got an employee only at nine sixty-eight fifty-seven, that would be the county's liability for employee coverage. But if we went ahead and budgeted a thousand dollars per employee and they could take access or, or have that available depending on the coverage that they chose, so if they chose the one, option one, employee child, it's fourteen fifty and fourteen cents. The first thousand of that would be covered by the county, the remainder, four hundred and fifty dollars and fourteen cents would be covered by the employee per month.
I think we have to budget one thousand dollars and sixty-nine cents, so any employee that picks the renewal rate, they're still only out twenty dollars a month, is that correct?
Our renewal rate is nine sixty-eight fifty-seven for option number one. Option number one is going to be our new, uh, best plan, as you, if you would. There will no longer be a thousand and twenty-sixty-nine.
Okay, I see what you're saying, thank you.
Yeah, that, uh, that one on there is just for, for, uh, reference purposes, to say if we renewed, that's, if we renewed that plan with a five-hundred-dollar deductible, yes, it would be a thousand and twenty-sixty-nine as the liability to the county if we renewed with the five hundred. We're recommending that we do away with the five-hundred-dollar deductible plan and only, only provide options one, two, and three as the three choices to the employee.
Understood. I like the recommendation.
Orlando?
Good morning, uh, yes. Uh, so I just wanted to be here to answer questions, I know that that was a lot, uh, so I know that there's probably questions that you may have. Uh, and I just wanted to, um, just kinda talk about the conversation we had yesterday. Um, and so we met for about three and a half hours yesterday, um, just really kinda going over all the different options. Um, what we can do, I had my laptop, I was running the numbers as they were requesting them, uh, kind of trying to figure out what the best option is, right? Um, I think the biggest concern that I heard was that it's very expensive to cover families on your current plan. And, um, comparing to other counties, um, which is the question that was, that was, uh, posed to me, was other counties, you know, they're paying, the employees are paying less for their dependent coverage. And so looking at the other counties that we, that they mentioned, they had higher deductibles and they were contributing more towards dependent tiers, which is why the employees were then paying less for those dependent tiers. So what we were trying to accomplish is finding a way to make it affordable for your employees to cover their families. Um, at the end of the day, the costs are gonna continue going up, that's just the way, that's just the nature of the beast. So the same claim this year is gonna cost us more money next year. So the only way that we can eventually come down on the cost is by reducing claims cost, period. And that's where Sheriff was talking about being more involved in wellness and promoting the different, uh, programs that TAC offers. Um, you know, education, so educating the members on, don't go to the emergency room if it's an emergency, go to an urgent care. Uh, you know, an emergency room could cost us the plan a thousand dollars versus an urgent care, it's gonna cost us two hundred dollars. And also, it's gonna cost them less money out-of-pocket, because their co, their, their copay's smaller and their out-of-pocket's smaller. So those kinda things, it's, uh, educating the members, so not only changing plans up to reduce the, the cost, but increasing the deductible, but also having those conversations with the members about, here's ways that you can save the plan money. If you can save the plan money, then we can reduce the cost, 'cause at the end of the day, the pool is here to collect as much money as we need to pay out your claims. So if your claims go down, if the num, if the number of dollars that we're paying out in claims goes down, then we have to collect less money. That's resulted in a, in a reduction of costs for you. Um, so that's the ultimate goal, is to try to get people more educated, your employees more educated on ways that they can save money. The programs are available to manage diabetes, manage high blood pressure, where they're not ending up in the hospital with coronary artery disease, which is very expensive, but we're paying their medication to manage their conditions. Um, and those are things that, um, the committee has, is already kind of working towards and putting things in motion. Um, I've already spoken with Melinda about coming out for open enrollment and doing open enrollment presentations where we go over how your benefits work, especially if you're moving from your current plan to something very different. Um, I'm happy to come out and do those presentations where I go through in detail explaining the differences between the plans, um, explaining the, the cost differences to them, um, and then also just kind of giving them heads up on, hey, if this is what's going on, if you're having a stomach ache or whatever, Um, and then also just kind of giving them heads up on, hey, if this is what's going on, if you're having a stomach ache or whatever, call MD Live. Which is free for you, instead of going to the emergency room. Uh, it's gonna cost us less money, it's gonna cost you less money. And so, all these things that are available to them, that a lot of people don't know. Uh, one of the things that I told them yesterday was, if I walked out of this, you know, into the hallway and I talked to ten, ten of your employees. Probably nine of them wouldn't understand most of what I told them. And so, that's part of the education. Helping them understand what's available to them, that'll help reduce those costs.
So what would be the likelihood that TAC could create a video for our website, like if spouses wanted to go hear the presentation? Because I know, uh, a lot of employees are gonna have spousal input, should they decide to cover. And so, it'd be good to have a meeting with the departments, but it would also be good to have a meeting that includes spouses.
Yeah, and so, either way, you could, you could invite spouses to come to the open enrollment presentations. Or what we could do is, we could work on trying to maybe record the presentation that I do come, um, to present to your, to your employees. Record for you guys, send you guys the copy of it, and then you guys can upload that. Or even with new employees, you can use that video as the orientation to the benefits. Whatever, whatever, we're here to help you guys. We, at the end of the day, I want to see your goals accomplished, you know, that, the committee kept asking me, well, what do we have to do to get, you know, to, to this certain level? And I said, well, ten, so over forty-eight months, you guys are at about ninety-one percent loss ratio. So that means that ninety-one cents out of every dollar that you guys have contributed has gone towards claims. We, our targeted loss ratio is ninety-four percent. So you guys are just slightly below where we wanna be. Which for us means, we have you guys figured out pretty well, in terms of where your rates are. The question they kept asking me is, well, how do we get down? It's, so the question that they posed, me, I posed back to them. Well, where do you wanna be? What, what price do you wanna be at? Wherever you wanna be at, that, then that's gonna depend, because we're basically breaking even, which is right where we wanna be. We don't wanna collect more than what we need. And when we do, we give money back. So, I think I pulled up, it was like two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we've given back in surplus distribution over the past, uh, five years. So when we do have an excess of money, we do give it back to our accountants. Um, and so that's where, depending on where you guys wanna be, that's where I can help you guys figure out, well, what things do we need to implement? Uh, part of what Melinda was talking about was the county-specific incentive that we, that we're working on. So Ashley Hirtz, who's your, uh, Wellness Consultant, who's my partner, she's working with you guys on trying to figure out a way to incentivize employees to go get their annual exam every year. The more we can do that, the more people, supr, it's very, very low, just across the board. How many employees actually go to the doctor every single year and get that annual exam? Uh, but it's very important, because that's where we catch things, that's where we catch that you have high blood pressure, that you have diabetes. If you don't go to the doctor and you don't know about it, you're not treating it. And if you're not treating it, you can end up in the hospital without knowing what's going on. So, obviously, just because they go doesn't mean they're gonna take care of themselves, but they're more likely to take care of themselves if they know something's wrong. Uh, so those things, uh, are things that we're looking at, in terms of trying to drive people to the right places, that'll save you guys money long-term. To reduce costs in the long run, so that we can reduce our, how much money we have to collect from you guys. So I think this plan, what they, so what their suggestion is, is to get rid of that five hundred plan, five hundred dollar deductible plan, which is what you currently have. Um, and I told them, it's a very, very rich plan. Very few counties do have, very few employers in general have plans that low. Um, the national average is a five thousand dollar deductible, so you guys are well below that. And, um, I think that the, the reason why they looked at that was because you, the employees can't, can't afford that, right? They can afford the twenty bucks for the employee only, but they can't afford the differences in the family and children and rates and stuff like that. By going to this, it's not as great of a benefit, but it's still, the thousand dollar deductible still gives them a great benefit, it's, it's still a great plan. Uh, and, instead of paying the twenty dollars that they're paying now for it, they would get that for free. And then real, the real benefit would come from all those employees who currently are not covering their, their children and spouse because they can't afford it. And then, now hopefully with the third option being available to them, hopefully that gives them enough savings to where then it is affordable to them. Uh, I think Sheriff was saying that a lot of, uh, the people that he talks to get coverage for their family elsewhere. Whether it's in the marketplace, or whether it's through their spouse, or where, wherever it may be, they're going elsewhere for it. And so, if, and those are, you know, obviously, if we can get a lot of family coverage on here, that's gonna be better for the plan, because we're collecting more money. And the children normally don't have high-cost claims. So then, you know, when you're looking at the scale of cost versus contribution, your contribution's going up, but your claims really aren't going up. So then that's going to actually help us in terms of looking at your loss ratio, and being able to see those costs coming down. Relatively to how much more we're collecting. And being able to say, okay, well, instead of getting, giving you a five percent increase this year, next year, we're gonna say, okay, well now you're down from eight, you know, ninety-one percent loss ratio down to an eighty-two percent loss ratio. So instead of a five percent increase, we're gonna give you a three percent decrease. Um, those are examples, but, you know, the lower those numbers go, with the loss ratio, the more we can start reducing your costs and bringing you back down to more affordable where you guys wanna be at budget-wise.
Comparatively in the pool, uh, with the five percent, what is Harden County's rate?
You guys are right in the middle, um, so, and that's the way it always works, so the pool needed amount this year was five point nine percent. So because you guys, uh, your twelve-month loss ratio, loss ratio was about eighty-five percent. So you guys are a good amount below where we want you to be, so that's why, because the pool needed amount was five point nine, Harden's receiving a, a five percent. And, um, when, uh, Sheriff was talking about the seven percent. The base rate is five percent for this year. Um, when you go to a dual plan or a multi-plan option, there is a two percent charge in there, because what we see is that the people that need the, that, the people that are costing the plan the most money, they're gonna go with the lowest deductible option. And then the people that are gonna go with, that, that are healthy, are gonna go with the cheapest option. So we're gonna collect less money, but then the claims aren't gonna go down. So in order to kind of hedge our bet on that, we, that's why that two percent's in. So what we discussed was, uh, and as you mentioned, I, I can't promise anything, but knowing that is why we put that two percent in. But if we can accurately predict that you are actually going to have more people put family coverage on. Then that makes it easier for us to say, okay, well, now we're actually going to be collecting more money, because more people, because we're now gonna have a lot of employee family, which is more money coming into the pool, and that's not gonna be as high of claims. So there's a conversation that we can have of looking to see if that two percent is needed, because then we can... Because the two percent is basically because we don't know, we don't know what's gonna happen, and we have to try to hedge our bets, in terms of, we still have to try to collect enough money to pay your claims. And so, if we can have a better idea of we're not gonna be losing money, then that's where we can start having those conversations of, well, maybe the two percent isn't needed. Or maybe we only need one percent, as you mentioned, so that's where the five and seven percent, um, numbers came from.
Judge, do you have anything?
The only thing I can think of is if we have a lot of people that get, uh, upset about losing the Cadillac Plan, would we wanna revisit that if we decide today to do without it?
I mean, you can always add it back next year if you wanted. It's not something that you, you know, if you get rid of it this year, you, you lose it forever. Now, and I think the reason why we had the discussion was because notorious, and the, the number that I gave them was that ten percent, this is just nationwide, this is insurance in general. But ten percent of the, of the, of the employees account for ninety percent of their claims cost. So, realistically, you're gonna have a very small percentage of people that are actually needing that deductible. So those are gonna be the people that are gonna be probably upset, because now they're gonna come out of pocket five hundred dollars more. However, that's a very small percentage of your population, versus, you know, the rest of the people that are now gonna get something that was a little bit more affordable.
And I guess I have a question, Judge and, and Auditor. What about the people that are grandfathered, does that go away?
Well, that's what, uh, we actually kind of forgot about that in the committee meeting, but Melinda and I discussed that this morning. Um, we haven't really addressed that, and I don't know if she got a chance to talk with you about it.
No, I didn't. The ones that we have grandfathered in, on that five hundred dollar, well, that's the only plan we offer. Would they still be grandfathered in, or is that our policy?
And in terms of grandfathered how, they're grandfathered into the five hundred dollar deductible plan?
They're at, uh, at a lower rate.
Basically, on the grandpa, and I'm not, and that was before my time, but, and I'm not sure how that agreement came to be, because I haven't had a chance to look at that. But, from what I have researched and looked at just this morning, the rates that the county provide, that the county portion is higher. For those people that are grandfathered.
And the dependent tiers as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So basically, the increase between the employer portion, uh, so, current year rate versus new year rate. The difference, the employer portion goes up, the county covers that difference in the dependent tiers.
And I just thought, that is a county thing. And so, and we only have one person on that, that's in the grandfathered plan. So the only thing that would change for them is they would be moving to the thousand dollar deductible, unless they wanted to go to a higher deductible to lower their insurance rates. But the county would still be responsible for paying that portion. Because that does not have anything to do with TAC.
Did you hear that Judge?
There's one.
Oh, Sheriff. I heard it, but I didn't quite catch it. There's one person that this would affect if we don't grandfather them, is that what you're saying?
Even if we did grandfather them?
He's, he's grandfathered in, but that's the county policy, it has nothing to do with TAC. And therefore, we would still be responsible for that little bit of increase, but Candace and I did figure it out, and that person's insurance would actually go down. I mean, of course, they would have a higher deductible, but it would be like four dollars cheaper a month on the best plan, the thousand dollar deductible.
Understood.
Okay.
We would just be paying more than the thousand dollars towards their...
Right, but we do that now.
Their coverage, yeah, which is what we do right now.
And it's just a minimal impact, right?
Right, right.
Okay, so... Judge, what is your recommendation to the court?
Really just have one more question, for either the Sheriff or Orlando. So looking at this sheet, you have this one column that says renewal rates, that's our current Cadillac Plan. And that goes away if we, if we go with this sheet, and then we go with option one, two, or three, is that correct?
Yes, so the, the, the base plan would be the thousand dollar deductible. So then, option one, two, and three would be your three options that are available, and you'd do away with the eight hundred NG, which is the current one.
Well, the only thing I hate is that we really are just now, uh, getting this information and don't have a lot of time to think about it, I'm just not sure. I know you said Waldo, it's a small population, but they're usually the loudest. And, uh, we wanna hear what they have to say as well.
And we, we also discussed the other option of keeping...
I just hate to make a, uh, a split decision, but I know it's gotta be made because of finalizing the proposal. What do the rest of the court members think?
Yeah, that was the other op, option that we discussed, was keeping the, the five hundred dollar deductible as the base plan. And then going to the, you know, the two thousand and four thousand dollar deductible is the other two options. I will let Sheriff talk about why they recommended to do away with that.
So, Judge, there's, with the, with the dual, you can have as many options, it's our understanding, as, as you want. Uh, obviously, there's, at some point, you've, you've, you've gotta rein that in, and we don't need seven or eight or nine different choices out there, because if you're confusing your workforce then, it kind of gets all muddy in the water. But if we, if the court so wished to keep the renewal as it is, with the Cadillac Plan, with the five hundred dollar deductible. And the county pays a thousand dollars towards that, the employee that chose that would be paying the twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents, uh, to, to offset that. And you would go from having three choices to four. You'd have the base, which is the eight hundred NG, and then you would have options one, two, and three to, 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 uh, complement that.
I like that option, in the sense that it gives us time to survey, and by the time we renew next year. Then if we drop that, then we would have had a year to educate everybody.
So if we keep that option, can we go ahead and allot a hundred and, or a thousand twenty dollars and sixty-nine cents per employee? So it would cover any employee that wants to keep the Cadillac Plan?
And then do away with the twenty dollars?
It would stay in the general fund if they don't.
Do away with the twenty dollar co-pay from the, or, not co-pay, but...
Premium cost, you mean?
Premium cost, I would agree.
So you'd prob, you'd have, you'd have almost no savings, because anybody who's employee only, if they're getting it for free, they wouldn't choose any other options. So you're gonna end up paying a thousand twenty for every single employee.
So just put a thousand dollars toward each policy.
Can it be a thousand sixty-nine, so it's still the twenty?
Thank you.
Yeah, we do the thousand twenty for the five hundred dollar deductible. There's no sense in having the thousand dollar plan, because...
Judge, did you hear that recommendation?
I just wanna make sure that the, uh, everybody that's got to manage this, and including the Insurance Committee, they made a recommendation, we're kind of, uh, asking them to backtrack a little bit, I just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page, if we go with four plan options, is that okay with everybody?
So now he said four, adding the five hundred, keeping the thousand?
No, adding the five hundred, and then the other three options that the committee's brought to us.
So the five hundred, the one thousand, the two thousand, and the one thousand?
Yes. And then, it would be...
Bear with me, I'm trying to get it muted again.
If I'm, if I'm understanding right, I muted, I muted this one.
Okay.
If I understand right, then we'd pay a thousand dollars and sixty-nine cents per employee, and the ones who keep the Cadillac Plan. The five hundred deductible pays twenty dollars a month. And then, everybody else would be given that thousand dollars and sixty-nine cents toward...
So, couple housekeeping issues, uh, if we could get away from an odd numbered cents, that really helps out.
I will tell you, these, these numbers are correct, except for we do round down to the, to the nearest, uh, even number. So, that, that would actually end up being one thousand twenty and sixty-eight cents.
Okay, that, that would be better for us.
Yeah, I was, I was running the numbers on the fly with them, and that's why I sent them, but we do, when we send out the rates, we do round down to the nearest, uh...
And so, is it the consensus of the court, to keep, and the committee to, to go with current plan plus the other three options for this year? To educate the employees?
You brought up a point, to, just to circle back to that, on your, your comment was, what about allowing and budgeting for the full thousand and twenty? Uh, that's gonna be, that's gonna be the court's...
Well...
But if you agree that there's a...
So there are, so there's, they're already, they're already paying twenty dollars for the Cadillac Plan. So, then they have the choice of, do you wanna continue paying the twenty dollars towards the Cadillac Plan? Or do you want to get free for one, for the, you know, the thousand dollar deductible?
One, two, and three.
Yeah, because if they're, if, if we're not gonna offer, uh, so if we don't, there wouldn't be a reason to keep the one thousand dollar if we're gonna have the five hundred dollar. Unless it's, you know, unless there's some...
Well, the one thousand, the one thousand would offer you the opportunity to still offer that Cadillac Plan at a little bit of a premium. So that way the people, you know, there's a little bit of premium on their end to elect that. More, you'll probably end up getting more people electing the thousand dollar deductible, but they pay zero for it.
Well, and the employee plus family on option one is less than the Cadillac Plan. So, they'd still save a hundred and thirty-five dollars, um, by going with option one and having the larger deductible instead of the other one.
Is there any comments from employees and, uh, gal or...
I'll speak up, I'm gonna stay with the plan with God.
You like the smaller deductible?
Do you have any dependent coverage? And, and quite frankly, this was not about the employee, and, and the committee's objectives was not so much about employees that have no dependent coverage. It was about creating opportunity for those that either did have, or maybe would want to have dependent coverage.
He has his own insurance, so it, it doesn't benefit us, but...
Right, right.
Judge?
And we...
Are you okay if we take action today with, uh, keeping the current rate, employees paying twenty dollars, and then adding the other three options? Uh, if you add option one, two, or three, then, uh, if, those employees would not pay the twenty dollar co-pay. There would be no fee, and then the thousand dollars and sixty-nine, or sixty-eight cents would be applied to if they chose dependent care.
I'm good with it, as long as it's not a big hassle, we manage for four different plans on our end. And what I would like to say about the twenty dollars a month, I'd like for us to, uh, possibly talk early next year, whenever we start this healthy county incentive, and use that twenty dollars to, uh, maybe incentivize people to join that. That's something I thought we'd talk about later.
Okay.
And then as far as, as whether or not we budget one thousand or one thousand dollars and sixty-nine cents, I would refer to Candace and just ask her, which is helpful on, on her end for that.
So he said, how much is it of a hassle is it going to be to administer four different plans?
Still the two percent.
Yes.
On your end, and then if we did the one thousand sixty-nine cents, that would be easier than the one thousand even.
Yes, because if y'all went with the, the five hundred dollar deductible plan, the premium is one thousand twenty-sixty-eight, but i- if you left those cents out there, then it's gonna create an issue with us on the accounting side.
Well, it's on the benefit side, only get the benefit once a month, and just figure where we divide four different ways, you know, but you hit the benefits once a month, so the benefit side, you can, you're wrong.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it would be easier for the county to pay the sixty-nine cents than the employee.
Than the employee, exactly.
So, one of the, if I can circle back just a, just a second. Uh, a couple of committee members kinda nudged and nodded and said, hey, we, we wanna go on record and, and, and just tell you that from a committee's standpoint, we still make the recommendation that you do not offer the five hundred dollar deductible plan. Uh, we understand that's the court's purview to make those decisions. Um, we still stand with, we eliminate that plan and offer the option one, two, and three as the three choices, for the simple fact of the county, the county itself will see no cost savings, is our fear, because you're not gonna have an employee only pick option one, two, or three. And so, for, for what it's worth, and a, a nod from those on the committee. And we discussed that yesterday, quite frankly. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know that I said that real forceful in the opening remarks, but it was out there on the table being discussed again. Um, the committee recommendation is that you choose options one, two, and three only, and that you, that you eliminate the five hundred plan. Um, again, we served on the committee's job's pleasure, that decision's gonna be yours. Uh, but that's, for what it's worth, that was our recommendation.
Well, I was watching, uh, faces and heads while the presentation was going on, so.
Yeah.
Because of that, I would recommend keeping the plan we have, also going forward with the three plans, and then try to get it, try to educate through the next twelve months, and then get down to the three plans, and then maybe even, and Judge, is, what's your recommendation?
Uh, that sounds good to me, again, I don't think anybody answered me, to have four plans instead of three, is it going to be a, a bigger issue to administer?
No, sir.
Are you talking about on the budget side?
Budget side or on tax side?
And payroll and HRO, I mean, the whole combined.
Payroll, no.
Everybody says no, it would not be a bigger hassle.
Well, that would be my recommendation to the court, if we could get a second.
Now, I will second that.
Is to keep the current plan.
Have what you're going to book to.
Up to one thousand dollars and sixty-nine cent, or sixty-eight cents. Up to one thousand sixty-eight for the covers the employee chooses.
If that's the, if that's gonna be the rate for the five hundred dollar plan?
We, we give you guys a right, a prime number, so.
Yeah, so a thousand sixty-eight, whatever, twenty dollars less than whatever the, uh, premium is for the five hundred dollar deductible.
Okay, so I'll, I'll amend my motion to say that, you still second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, passes unanimously, so that gets us down the road.
Thank you, committee.
Thank you.
Insurance is not fun to talk about, sorry, our lady.
We had a riveting to our conversation.
Yeah, I just wanna add real quick, if everybody can still hear me, that I really appreciate all the work the committee has done, they didn't have a lot of time to work on this, but thank y'all for doing so, and, uh, you're not off the hook yet, we still want y'all to help us as we go forward.
They're, they're smiling and shaking their head yes, Judge.
Not what I saw.
It was being positive.
I missed that, Chris.
I hear you. Item number six, consider taking action to set the two thousand and twenty-three TCDRS retirement rate as requested by Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director.
And it is my recommendation.
Chris, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to overtalk Melinda there, but I thought maybe we could just speed this one up. I've got it pulled up on the screen, the highlighted rate in yellow is what we're required to pay. The highlighted rate in pink is what we're currently paying, and unless Melinda wants to say something else, I think we should just stay with her.
That's what I was going to say, because that was something else we discussed in the insurance committee.
I'll second that.
All right, so the recommendation has been made by the judge, or the motion, uh, fif- uh, to stay at the current elected rate, there's been a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Now, do you have to vote on the death portion? I don't think we have the majority.
Uh, okay, so Judge, will you amend the motion to, uh, also pay the elected rate on the term life policy?
Yes, sir, my motion is so amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? All right. Item number seven, consider and possibly approve amendment of the Hardin County Rules, Regulations, and Requirements relating to the approval and acceptance of improvements and subdivisions or revised subdivisions by replacing the current Article three point O, Section L Drainage Plan requirements with new requirements for this section as presented, Amanda?
Um, I put this together, um, and took basically what our old regulations said. Uh, we had talked about it last week, that we had approved a change back in February to our, our subdivision regulations, and inadvertently had taken out some of our drainage requirements. So I put those back in, along with the new language that we approved in February. Um, the county engineers have reviewed it, the county attorney has reviewed it, the county judge has reviewed it, um, and everybody is good with this. We are, um, looking at putting together a committee to totally redo our subdivision regulations, uh, but this is just to, uh, get us protected again, and for, in the meantime. I'll make a motion to approve section.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Young, and a second by Commissioner Roberts, is there any more discussion?
Commissioner, I'd just like to add that if anybody wants to serve on that committee, to please let any commissioner or myself know within the next week or two.
Can everybody get that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show that it passes unanimously.
May I make a comment back on number six?
Yep, we're going back to item number six.
Oh, that rate for supplemental debt, the elected ra- the rate that we have right now, the required rate has gone down, I just want y'all to be aware of that, and I don't know.
Okay, we need to revisit item number six, Judge, on the elected rate for the term life. The elected rate has gone down, uh, from.
Well, the elected rate is what we have elected and what's in place, but the re- required rate for that portion has decreased, I think it's point one, two. For the supplemental debt?
Oh, the debt, that was fine.
It's currently point one nine, and I think it's going down to point one four.
What, where does that add on our sheet? Yes, it's going, it's, okay, so it's being reduced to point one four.
Right, so it, yeah, just so y'all are aware that that's.
Okay, I think our motion and second encompass that.
Okay.
So we should be good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Candace, what are we paying now, are we paying fifteen point three one now?
We're paying fifteen point three one for the retirement portion, and point one nine for supplemental debt, so altogether is fifteen and a half percent. So the fifteen and a half, with the death rate going down, the total rate's gonna decrease.
Is that gonna, on the total contribution rate, is that fifteen point four five? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes, sir, so it's point zero five three.
Okay.
Decrease.
So Judge, I, I guess I'm gonna add, we'll go, we'll go back up to item number six, so that we can be, uh, probably more accurate for the record. So the total contribution rate for retirement plan funding and the group, uh, term life rate, uh, would it be your motion to adopt the fifteen point four five percent?
Yes, sir, that's my motion, and I've tried to hurry us along while ago. Fifteen point four five, that's the rate.
Aye.
Second, all right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, thank you, Judge. Item number eight, consider approval of the county judge's request to set fiscal year twenty-three wages for the Hardin County Crime Victims Assistance Center personnel as follows. Project director's salary at fifty-two thousand, two fifty annually, and the victims' advocates at sixteen dollars and seventy-two cents per hour. All positions are grant funded, and does not come out of the general budget, they come from grant funds. So entertain a motion?
Okay, approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Young.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Roberts, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number nine, a budget workshop to de- to discuss fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, October first, two thousand twenty-two, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, proposed budget expenditures for the following offices and departments. And the first step is health services.
I would like to start with the Health Department, I'm not asking for an increase with the Health Department. Uh, the only thing that I would like to add, uh, the things that we could not pick up and break any of the grants, I, I did put it in the budget, and one of them was the flu vaccines that we have for county employees. For the last two years, the state have been able to supply us, uh, flu vaccines, but they're telling us not to count on it this year, and in the previous year, those employees that did not go to the health fair, we had to purchase those, uh, those vaccines, and I'm asking that we purchase those again this year.
Do you have a total cost?
Oh, sorry, the total cost is twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred.
Mm-hmm.
And Judge, for those vaccines on that cost, uh, I think you stated that you had, uh, that you've reviewed that, and you're able to adjust our budget to where there's no overall increase?
And Sharon, is that correct, we can keep, the, the bottom line won't increase, is that correct?
It won't, it's, it decreased by two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
It di- it, the, the total overall decrease is by two hundred and thirty dollars.
For the Health Department.
For the Health Department.
Sounds good to me.
Any questions? All right, so, uh.
Does, does Candace have any questions about that?
Uh, this is just for the Health Department, are y'all gonna discuss the Health Department certification section of this?
Yes, yes, I'm just doing that, that's. Okay, for the Health Department certification class, classes, or revenue, we have seen an increase in the last two years, Ken, I think, last two years. We've seen an increase, and we, we would like to increase the budget. We had it for this year at.
Seventy-five hundred.
And, um, last year, and we did over ten thousand dollars, and this year, we're at over ten thousand dollars, and we do have, I think, two more, two more months left? We have two more months left, and we have classes that are scheduled, so I would like to increase that to ten thousand dollars.
And that gives you a net zero? Or there's no increase from the general fund budget, correct?
Correct.
No, no money's coming from general fund?
Correct, that's correct.
Well, yes and no, so the, the general fund is taking in revenue for the classes that are being provided, and that revenue, she's saying, has increased, and so they want to increase the expenses in relation to that revenue, the revenue's in general fund, and those expenses are in general fund.
Okay, did you get that, Judge?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody agree with that? So I think all we have to do is give our mod and approval, correct? All right, so B, there's gonna be agri life.
Oh, wait, wait.
You have a moment?
We also have intergent care.
Yes.
For intergent care, I'm requesting that, uh, we promote the senior staff member to intergent healthcare coordinator, and, um, that will increase the salary, of course, and with the increase, with the, with the increase of the salary, I'm going to, uh, reduce the county portion of the intergent care clerk, she's also working on a grant, so her s- that reduction will reflect on the grant.
So the amount that we would be, uh, increasing for, she would become the department, the department overseer there? So am I saying that right?
She, intergent healthcare coordinator.
Intergent healthcare coordinator.
Yes, and she has.
So the amount of increase would be met, due to the duck, reducing the clerk's.
That's correct.
By that same amount.
That's correct.
You agree with that?
Yeah, and what is that amount? I don't, I don't have that, and do you guys have that?
I don't have it.
I don't have it. Judge, do you have anything on that?
Uh, no, sir, I don't, and they're gonna need it, uh, in order to take action when we get to number ten. At least I think so, and this Candace is.
All right.
We will need that amount, so we can set the salary, but I understand what Sharon's saying, uh, she's gonna offset the increase, uh, by moving some of the, uh, other employees' money into the grant, is that correct, Sharon?
That's correct, Judge.
Okay.
I just need to know.
I'm okay with that, we just need that rate.
Okay.
Yeah, I just need to know what the rate is, do you have, I, I, that's not in the document.
If we move on to the other two, will that give you time to get that rate and bring it back to us for this court?
Yes.
Okay, so Judge, what we're gonna do is move to agri life, and then after that, that gives Sharon time to get the amount for Candace, and then we can come back and present that to the court.
I don't have the, uh, budget worksheet for intergent healthcare, were there any other line, line items you wanted to increase in intergent healthcare? Travel and training, I believe, is that right?
I'm sorry?
Travel and training.
Oh, travel.
In intergent healthcare, was there another line item you wanted to increase? I don't have that worksheet handed.
Tra- travel and training, well, I don't wanna increase it, I wanna leave it in there, the travel and training.
Leave it in there as is.
Just leave it as is?
Yes, sir.
Got you, no problem.
So you need the salary increase, the rates, do you know?
You need to know the rate that you wanna set the intergent healthcare coordinator position.
So the percentage?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's a percentage or a dollar.
How many dollars per hour?
Okay, I can give that to you.
All right, so we'll take agri life.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, for ours, I was going to have twenty-five hundred dollars that I would like added to the total of our budget. Um, mainly two thousand of it going towards my travel budget. Um, we are at a thirty-six, actually, it's thirty-six and a half percent increase for enrollment for four H. Um, that might not sound like a ton, but we're at a hundred and five members, and when I started, it was seventy-six. So, um, it's pretty considerable, considering everything that is also going up, um, and we're opening pretty much fully up for agri life events again, and it's involving a lot more travel, a lot more kids going, a lot more different places. Um, I think for June, I was geared maybe ten days out of the month, it's been a little wild. Um, and then we would like to add five hundred dollars to our office supply. Um, we shifted our miscellaneous line item, and they split that into dues and subscriptions, which is completely fine with us, um, it's just gonna take us going through and changing where we're pulling out our water bill out of, which was originally going through miscellaneous. And then, um, we still need a, a couple of things for the office, like a shredder, because we did key confidential documents that were required by the state, and we need to make sure that we get rid of them properly, and they're not, you know, hanging around whenever we're past our date on them. And, um, we would like to try and do a internet provider for the new building down at the barn through that as well. Uh, we did look through Spark, and it would be forty dollars initially for the first two months, and then I think it would go up, um, but Verizon is piloting their new program, uh, that actually just, they started doing for our area, where it would be, uh, twenty-five dollars a month, I believe. We would have to look into that one a little bit more, but we were hoping to use that out of that budget as well.
Out of what, the office supply?
The office supply budget, unless we needed to make a different line item.
Probably would make a different line for that, if the court is. Probably will make a different line with that if the court is in agreement to do it.
Judge, did you hear Candace about creating, uh, additional line items for the specific things that, uh, we, we discussed for AgriLife so that it could reflect the, the actual charge?
Yes, sir, and that sounds good to me. Are we still looking at a twenty-five hundred dollar increase overall?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I mean, let's go and give him more. I'll take it.
So now.
I was going to pay you to go, go to A and M and ask them for some more money, but, uh, I'm, I think this is reasonable in my degree.
I do too. I agree.
So we have a motion?
Our motion.
We are in agreement.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you.
Y'all appreciate it.
All right, so we're waiting on Sharon for the Health Services. And so.
And Candace, is there anything else that we need to take care of under item number ten besides that Health Services rate for Intergent Healthcare?
I can't think of anything right now. I guess the only thing that I have an issue with is in, uh, when the Health Department got increases, the, there are some employees that are split. When they got those increases in twenty-one, that was all being duh, paid for by the grant funding. And so now, this year, how do you guys want to, um, continue with that grant, pulling those funds, because these employees are split paid? So we're given a four and a half percent increase. I'm just trying to figure out the best way to, uh, report that.
When we were looking at a five percent increase, I made sure with, uh, Sharon that the grants would cover that and she said it would. So since we decided on four point five, it should definitely cover that. Will I ask her to confirm that on the record when she comes back to me?
So what about the, the portion that the grant funds were picking up last year for the raise they had last year? Do they still need to pick up that portion this year?
If I remember right, they asked for some special raises during fiscal year twenty-one that we agreed to and then they didn't get three percent raise for fiscal year twenty-two. So whatever we give this year, which is four and a half, is what we, what we decided on. The grant should pick all, all of that cost up, but when Sharon comes in, let's ask her to confirm.
Here, can you?
Aye.
Mm-hmm.
Aye.
Check the minutes.
I'm just making notes.
The four and a half, I have a question. The four and a half percent increase that we're giving, are we applying that to the temporary personnel? And that, and historically, we haven't always gave, given the increase there, so I just want to make sure that we.
No, but they brought a recommendation to the court and I think it was no, but I don't remember. They would leave it.
Didn't they, uh, didn't they bring up the temporary rate and they agreed that the rate it would be in twenty-three?
I think so.
They agreed to bring it to a solid amount.
To a solid amount.
That was for part-time personnel, I believe. But then I don't know that they addressed the temporaries. There were, no, I take that back. Some temporar-
It was, we did do temporaries.
Some temporaries were addressed, but not all the temps were addressed.
There was only one temporary, or, uh, it's not a temp position, it's a part-time position, I think, in the county attorney's office that was being paid by two different funds and that, that position was not taken care of, but I thought all others were. I don't mean it wasn't taken care of, it just wasn't included in what action we took on the day that that first, uh, set of recommendations were made back in June.
Is that it?
He said that one didn't, was not included.
Correct.
So do I leave that rate the same?
Do, do we leave that rate the same, Judge? That's Candace's question.
Which position are we talking about?
In the county attorney's office. The one that's being paid for by two, two different funds.
Isn't that the one that we just changed, passed the meeting and then amended again this morning?
Yes. Pre-trial diversion, yes, sir.
Yeah, I think whatever we did today, that's what it's going to be, if I'm not mistaken.
Did you get that, Candace?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say for the record, I really miss you being here today. Sharon?
I'm sorry I'm not there. I'll go to.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Currently, the employee is at eighteen ninety-five and we're looking to increase to twenty-one dollars an hour, by two dollars and five cents.
Two, it's two dollars and five cent increase for the Intergent Healthcare Coordinator.
And did she say twenty-one dollars an hour?
Yes, sir, from eighteen ninety-five to twenty-one dollars.
All right, have you called that line item on the agenda yet, number ten?
Not yet.
If you'll do that, then I think we can make a motion on that and if there's anything else Candace sees that we need to take care of, we can do that as well.
Okay, item number.
Plus, we do need to ask Sharon about that four and a half percent.
Okay.
Question that Candace had?
Item number ten, consider taking action as necessary to ensure all wages, rates, and other expenditures are set for the fiscal year twenty-three proposed budget as discussed during this and previous budget workshops regarding the fiscal year twenty-three proposed budget.
Make your point.
Make your point. Got a second by Commissioner Roberts. Now time for discussion.
And the approval is the request that Sharon just made. Is that correct for twenty-one dollars an hour?
Yes, sir.
For Intergent Healthcare Coordinator?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Do you have anything else, Candace?
That's for the FY twenty-three budget, correct?
Yeah, for the fiscal year twenty-three budget to include the recommendation by Sharon.
There are some employees that are split funded or paid. And in twenty-one, they got a special increase that the grant funded. Those funds are now like in limbo, I guess I can say. So now the county's getting a four and a half percent increase, so though, that separation, is the county going to absorb that or is the grant still funding that rolling forward?
Sure.
Anybody that's on a grant, and I think that's everybody in the Health Department, the grant, I did budget for the grant and got approved for the, uh, at that time it was five percent. But yes, the grant will be absorbing the four point five percent increase.
Okay.
For all Health Department employees.
Okay.
Okay. Judge, you have anything for us?
Did we vote on that?
No, we got a motion and a second to have discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any who oppose? Show that it passes unanimously. Item number eleven, discussion only by any county official of any item not on the agenda without taking action. Judge? You don't have any? Ms. Sharon?
Commissioner, I just want to say how much I appreciate the insurance committee for what they've done and I am blessed and appreciative of the fact that I personally have insurance for myself. I'm appreciative of the twenty dollar, whatever, but I am so appreciative of them working towards trying to get people that have families on their insurance to be able to afford it.
Yes.
Have people in my office, and I'm sure you all do.
Yeah.
That can afford the insurance for their families.
That's correct.
And I, I appreciate that so much. I, I, I think that they did a very good job and I just want to say how much I appreciate that consideration.
I do too. Now, I wish we'd have had probably a little bit more time for discussion for everybody because I think y'all presented some really good recommendations. I do, I, I, it, it looks really good going forward. A lot of hard work. Anybody else? We have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Uh, make so.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned.
Do you see that yet?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, Sharon?
That's what I did.
You can be your own.